Evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 1st Michigan City Council meeting. I like to call it a meeting to order. Before we stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag and a moment of silent prayer, I just want to read the rules and regulations that we are going to be running the city council meetings by. And just to refresh memories is that, and this is under Michigan City Code, Section 2-55, "The presiding officer shall preserve order and decorum at the council meetings and shall decide all questions of order without debate, and surely to the appeal and then, if need be, appeal it to the council." Section 2-59 of the Michigan City Code, "The presiding officer may entertain comments from people in attendance regarding any ordinance or resolution under consideration. After each reading and prior to council comments and debate, people in attendance must be allowed to comment on the topic of a legally required public hearing. The presiding officer may set reasonable limits on the length of a time for each person to speak on each item, but not less than three minutes." So that is a Michigan City Code that each individual is allowed three minutes to speak on a subject. "The preside officers or officers shall enforce order and rules during the period of public Three minutes will be the time limit to speak during the public comment, and in case of any disturbance or disorderly conduct, the presiding officer shall have the right to require that the chamber be cleared. Proper decorum at meetings is to act professionally and respectfully to all city officials at the meeting or whether they're not at the meeting. Foul language or directly cussing is not tolerated. We are here to provide the citizens of Michigan City, and I'm speaking on the Michigan City Council, we are here to provide a service to the citizens of Michigan City by conducting the business that it takes to run the city. And we should not be subject to any disorderly approach or unprofessional comments whether we are here as a council body or whether an individual is not here and someone comes to either this microphone, that microphone, or that microphone and wants to degrade someone for whatever position they may hold in the city. So from here on out, that is not going to take place. And the chair, which I represent, if someone's out of order, they will be asked to step away from the microphone, and if need be, they'll be asked to leave the meeting. With that being said, I would like everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nyelob, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry, Ms. Carnes, Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Hamilton.
Present.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Prezwalinski.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stemley. We have in seven present and two absent.
And Ms. Nyelob, Councilwoman Carnes and Councilman Beatry both contacted me. Councilwoman Carnes is out of town with work, and Councilman Beatry is ill, so they're both excused from this meeting. Reports of standing committees, Councilman Dabney.
Hold the minutes.
Approval of minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes from September 17th. Is there any corrections, deletions? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion to approve by Councilman Hamilton and seconded by Councilman Prezwalinski. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees, Councilman Dabney.
All right. Tonight's Finance Committee meeting was called to order at 6:04 PM by Chairman Dabney to review claims filed since our last meeting. Committee members Fitzpatrick and Prezwalinski were also present, as well as Councilmember Simmons. City Controller Rich Murphy was also in attendance. Claims reviewed total $239,881.42 from the Riverboat Fund and $2,104.53 from the Boyd Development Fund for a total docket of $241,985.95. There were no other outstanding issues to discuss. And with that being done, Councilman Prezwalinski moved to recommend approval of the docket, and with a second by Councilman Fitzpatrick, the motion to approve the docket was approved unanimously. On a motion made by Councilman Fitzpatrick and a second by Councilman Prezwalinski, the meeting was adjourned at 6:10 PM. Summary of claims are as follows. From the Riverboat Fund, Fletcher Chrysler Products, Inc., $25,195 even. Global Engineering and Land Surveying, $7,652.50. Kenny Outdoor Solutions, $3,422.47. Kiesler Police Supply, Inc., $22,032.40. S.E.H. of Indiana LLC, $17,308.50. And Community Crossings Tall Timbers, $35,896.71. Community Crossings, Springlin Avenue, $49,583.70. Community Crossings Willow Springs, $32,796.30. And the final Community Crossings for $45,995.10. For a total from the Riverboat Fund of $239,881.42. From Boyd Development Fund, Johnson John's and Septic Service, $1,320.51. The News Dispatch, $384 even. George Prowitz, $402 cents for a total from the Boyd Development Fund of $2,104.53. And once again, a total claims docket of $241,985.95. And that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Okay, thank you, Councilmen. Moving ahead, under reports of special or select committees, I don't believe there's any reports tonight.
Got it.
Councilman Dabney.
This is what I'm going to do there.
Is that what you're going to do, the amendments?
Yeah, I'll do the amendments and that tonight. All right, this is a report or summary of the budget hearings that we heard over the last couple of weeks. So I'll go ahead and just, you know, read what I have here, summarizing what we did, and we'll talk about the recommended cuts and things like that to the budget that the Finance Committee came up with here. And this was from September 17th, 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th budget hearings. The purpose of the budget hearings was to discuss, review, and make recommendations of changes to city department budgets, including the outlays from the Riverboat and Boyd Development funded capital projects. Over the course of the dates listed above, the Finance Committee met with department heads from the city departments to discuss the 2020 budgets for each department. On Wednesday, September 18th, we discussed budgets of the Controller, Marketing, City Clerk, the Mayor, the City Council, Police Commission, Fire Commission, Board of Works with the Event Planner and Recreation Director, Planning and Inspection, Aviation, Central Services, Vector Control, Municipal Coach, Motor Vehicle Highway, Central Maintenance, and the Cemetery Departments. We came back on Monday, September 23rd, and we discussed the budgets of the Fire and the Police Departments. On Tuesday, September 24th, we discussed the budgets of the Engineer, Personnel, City Hall, and the Attorney Departments. Wednesday, September 25th, we discussed the budgets of the Park Department, including within the Park Department, Recreation, Zoo Education, Senior Center, just the Recreation Fund, Golf, Park Concessions, and the Patriot Park Non-Reverting Departmental Budgets. On Thursday, finally, on Thursday, September 26th, the Finance Committee did a wrap-up of all budget discussions to make sure we had everything properly recorded and adjusted to our liking. We then decided to either approve or not approve table items from the previous days. So that was the wrap-up on Thursday, September 26th. After the budget hearings were finalized, the Finance Committee made the following recommended cuts to city budgets. All right, bear with me. The Board of Works, Category Repairing Maintenance, Account Number 436050. The original budget request was $25,000. The recommended cut was $5,000 for an amended balance of $20,000. Planning and Inspection, Repairs and Maintenance, 436050. The original budget request was $1,000. The recommended cut, $1,000, and the amended balance, zero. Cemetery Operational Fund, Operations Supplies Diesel, 422026. The original budget request was $6,000. Recommended cut, $2,000 for an amended balance of $4,000. Vector Control, Other Services and Charges, Other Contractual Services, 439090. Original budget request, $23,100. The recommended cut, $3,100 for the amended balance of $20,000. MC Transit, Operating Supplies Diesel, 422026. The original budget request, $130,000, and the recommended cut, $30,000, and the amended balance, $100,000. Once again, MC Transit, Other Services and Charges, Other Contractual Services, 439090. The original budget request was $44,500. Recommended cut, $9,500 for an amended balance of $35,000. Motor Vehicle Highway, Operating Supplies Gas, 422021. The original budget request was for $10,000. Recommended cut, $1,000. The amended balance of $9,000. Central Maintenance, Utilities Electric, 435010. The original budget request, $35,000. Recommended cut, $3,000 for an amended balance of $32,000. Park and Recreation Administration, Utilities Electric, 435010. The original budget request was $26,000. Recommended cut of $2,500 for an amended balance of $23,500. Park and Recreation Admin, again, Communication and Transportation Telephone, 432040. The original budget request for $11,152. Recommended cut of $2,500. The amended balance, $8,652. Park and Recreation, Park and Rec, Utilities Electric, 435010. The original budget request, $18,500. Recommended cut of $2,000 for an amended balance of $16,500. Park and Recreation Golf Fund, Other Supplies Gas, 422021. The original budget request, $20,000. Recommended cut of $2,500 for an amended balance of $17,500. Engineer, Other Services, Other Supplies, Other Supplies, I'm sorry, Other Supplies, 421005. Original budget request, $200. Recommended cut, $200. Amended balance, zero. The MC Promise Scholarship Printing and Advertising, 433030. The original budget request for $10,000. Recommended cut of $2,500. Amended balance of $7,500. Fire Department, Capital Outlay Machinery and Equipment, 445050. The original budget request for $89,000. Recommended cut of $10,000 for an amended balance, $79,000. Police Department, Riverboat Capital Outlay for Ammunition, 445050. The original budget request, $139,675.36. And there was a recommended cut of $10,000 in the ammo line item, which took the amended balance down to $129,625.36. And also, out of that same grouping, Police Department Riverboat Capital Outlay for a Honda ATV. This was, once again, line 445050. Now moving from the $129,675.36, a recommended cut there of the vehicle of $20,000. So the amended balance of that fund is $109,675.36. The marketing coming out of Boyd Development Marketing, 439, I'm sorry, 090. $400,000 was the original budget request. $20,000 recommended cut, and the amended balance is $380,000. And within that fund, this cut is actually coming from the marketing side. There's also another contract that's worked into that, but this comes strictly out of the marketing money there. Vector Control, Riverboat, 445050. The original budget request was $65,000. Recommended cut, $65,000 for an amended balance of zero. Park and Recreation from the Riverboat for Park Maintenance, 445050. Original budget request, $138,000 even. Recommended cut, $33,000 even for an amended balance of $105,000. Finally, the engineer, Riverboat Paving and Sidewalks, 443030. The original budget request was $1,850,000 even. The recommended cut of $250,000 for an amended balance of $1.6 million. And to sum it all up, a total amount of cuts made this year by the Finance Committee or recommended cuts by the Finance Committee came out to $474,800 even.
Okay, and these being amendments to the budget, I believe at this time that we can ask council members if they have any questions on these amendments. Are there any questions from council members on these amendments? Councilman Prezwalinski.
On the paving and sidewalk budget, that $225,000, how, is there, can we get an explanation how that actually, how we got to that point to take that out of the proposed budget? For informational purposes, because it's a big cut in the program.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean, if you want to, you can answer it, or else I'll answer it.
Yeah, that was a cut I made. I made the motion to make that cut because there was discussion about priority being on streets and roads, paving and sidewalks, and we have a lot of degrading park equipment and playground swings and so forth that were also being neglected, that were not mentioned anywhere in the budget for next year. So we decided to, well, I decided to make the move to remove this from the budget, and if this comes back up as an additional appropriation, possibly we'll be able to take some of this and repair some of our aging park equipment.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Well, with that being said, and I understand that, you know, what we did, I'm just saying for the public, but I have a great concern because I asked the city engineer to develop a list for us over the last X amount, as far back as he could go. Well, I've been trying to get that list, and then I was told today, I don't know if anybody has it or if anybody got it, but the mayor has it, and we haven't got it yet because I wanted to do some research on it myself, you know? Just so people know that we are looking at what's going on in the community and to get services for our wards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. And along with what Councilman Fitzpatrick said, and what we're talking about is Washington Park and the age of the playground equipment up there, you know, we put money into the greenhouse, $900,000 into the greenhouse, which now has some, I don't know, toys and things like that for the zoo, concession stand, and there's three police ATVs there, but we spent 900 grand rehabbing that building. Nothing's going on there. We spent money on the Lion House, on Rotary Castle, but yet we can't seem to find the money to get rid of the outdated playground equipment in Washington Park and buy updated ADA accessible playground equipment for children to come down here and enjoy Lake Michigan and the beach, just like anyone else. The mayor and I have had discussions about that, and Craig Phillips and I have had discussions about it, about trying to get money from the Redevelopment Commission, and if it takes some Riverboat money, then it's going to take some Riverboat money. But I think a priority to me, rather than worrying about a piece of blacktop over here, which I know is important, and we've spent, I think this year we're going to spend $3 million in blacktopping. And to me, the city streets don't look all that bad compared to some other cities, that we need to put our focus somewhere else with some money for a little bit and try to get that park updated. So that's my comments on that. Are there any other comments on the budget? Councilman Dabney.
And Councilman Prezwalinski said that the roads, you know, don't look that bad in Michigan City. People probably watch it or people hear, and so what about Highway 20? Well, Highway 20 is responsibility of NDOT. It's not, that's the state. That's not the city. So I know some people were thinking, what about Highway 20 out there? But, you know, just to piggyback on that with the park equipment and things like that, it's long overdue, and hopefully we can get something done. I do know, I have seen the park departments' capital outlays and what they plan to do out here in the future, and Washington Park is on the docket for 2021. But, you know, this has been in disrepair for a long time, and it's time. You know, it's the most used park we have in the system, so I agree with both Councilman Fitzpatrick and Prezwalinski here, that, you know, this passes with a 3-0 vote, so we all support this very strongly. Thank you.
Okay, anyone from the public who should speak on the amendments made on the budget? Anyone from the public who should speak on the amendments made to the budget?
Dwayne Perry, 2206 Maple Street, Michigan City. Just a point of clarification on this Police Department item, the Honda ATV. I'm wondering, and I know you don't answer questions now, if you would clarify during council comment, if what the cost of one of the ATVs are, and I think I counted four of them in there. I couldn't remember whether I saw four or five, but I just, I don't get it. Lifeguards, if anybody needs to run up and down that beach in an emergency, it's a lifeguard's, not the police. I don't think they need four or five of them, whatever the count is. So if you would offer a comment on that during council comment, thank you.
Anyone else from the public who should, yeah, anyone else from the public who should speak on this amendments?
Yes, sir. Royce Williams, Chief of Services, Michigan City Police Department. The reason we're requesting this one, it's a four-seater. We haven't had a four-seater, and this will allow us to bring personnel to, like, stop to, we've had a lot of issues over the last couple of years, to include a shooting and large groups fighting out there. When we go J3 and arrest some of them, it's very difficult to get them over the hills so we can transport a couple prisoners with two officers' personnel, so this is a four-seater. Never had one of those. Just trying to pick up our game down there on the beach when we have issues, that's all.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Chief, if you would, maybe the cost of one of them, $20,000? Thank you.
So that was one, one vehicle, not four?
Okay, when we're speaking, speak at the microphone, please, instead of speaking as we're walking away. Okay, moving on. Public comment is now closed on the amendments. Any other further council comment? Any other first council comment? Any further council comment? Ms. Nyelob on the vote?
No, hold on.
Oh, well, that's right. That's right.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So we're done.
Okay, next on, next on the agenda is the Youth Committee. Councilman Fitzpatrick, you wanted to do something this evening?
Uh, yes, we have a few members of the inaugural Youth Commission, and they're here and they're wanting to introduce themselves to the public and to the council.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan Patrick, Chairman of the Youth Commission, Youth Leadership Commission, and Councilman-elect, Fifth Ward City Council.
My name is Trevon Moore. I am the treasurer of the Youth Leadership Committee, and I currently go to Marquette Catholic High School, and I'm a senior, and I'm currently on the student government at Marquette High School.
I'm Alicia Posos. I am a commissioner for the Youth Leadership Commission. I forgot all of a sudden. I am working on going to college right now, that's all.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I am not currently in school, but I'm looking, starting PNW in the fall, possibly.
Okay, thank you.
So just a little bit more about the Youth Commission, if some have not looked into it, but this is put into place so that we can work with all department heads and the school systems themselves to see what we can do as young people trying to help other young people. And with all our minds put together, we have come up with some great things thus far, and Councilman Fitzpatrick can attest to that. So thank you for the wonderful opportunity for us to have this, and we don't, we look forward not to letting our young people down. I can't say we can't, we're not going to let you down because it's about our young people, so, thank you.
Okay, and if I could just, one comment, and I know that you said it's about young people helping young people.
Correct.
Somewhere along those lines.
Correct.
But it's actually, the way I look at it, it's young people helping the whole city, whether they're young people, older people, or whatever the situation is. Yeah, we need your assistance to make Michigan City a greater city than it is already, so appreciate all your participation and volunteering to do it. I guarantee you, you're going to have a lot of fun being involved with the city and the city government, so, all right? Thank you. Any other comments by council members? Councilman Stemley?
Yes, I'm glad, I'm glad we started this commission up, and I look forward to attending one of your meetings to get your ideas. Thanks.
Any other comments? Councilman Fitzpatrick?
I just wanted to reiterate, you know, some of the...
Well, I just wanted to uh reiterate, you know, some of the uh the things that uh Mr. Patrick said. Uh, they're an amazing group of young people. I've. I've uh gotten inspiration from just being their liaison and going to their meetings. I mean. Uh, the ordinance said they have to meet at least once a month. They made the decision to meet twice a month because they figured they need, they need to get the ball rolling. So uh. The other commissioners weren't able to be here tonight and they're in the process of ele- uh electing. Or nominating their ninth member. So they'll build a full working commission. They're, they've already got so many ideas going forward. Fundraising, community outreach. I, I think it's gonna be a great asset for the city and. Just the young people being able to empower the other young people in the city to help the city overall. I mean, I'm just really excited about it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Perez Belinski?
I'd like to thank all of you for uh volunteering your service to get some attention. To the youth of our community, to help them, to see their, hear their problems and hear their wants. And I, I, I deeply appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Simmons?
I would like to as well thank you for your services.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm glad you guys came tonight. Keep up the fantastic work. All right? Okay, next, we have reports of other city officers and departments. And this evening, we're gonna hear from Rich Murphy, City Controller, about the State Board of Accounts. Twenty eighteen supplemental compliance report. And the twenty eighteen financial statement and federal single audit report.
Good evening, Mr. President and City Council. Rich Murphy, City Controller. Um, as you said, I'm here to give a brief overview of the city's two thousand eighteen audit. And to answer any questions you may have. I know you were emailed copies of the audit reports, which are quite lengthy. You have a copy here. First, a- as you know, the city is audited by the State Board of Accounts on an annual basis. Um, this audit report is for the period of January first through December thirty first, two thousand eighteen. I, I've been through three audits thus far and the process has been similar for each audit. First and foremost, um, and I wanna, and this is important, I wanna make this very clear. Um, the two thousand eighteen summary, audit summary gives a unqualified opinion. By the State Boarding, Board of Accounts, uh, for the city of Michigan City. This is the audit result that every city wants. It's the unqualified opinion by the state. This is also referred to as the clean opinion. The clean opinion or unqualified opinion is the opinion where the auditor expresses. An opinion that financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. In all, in accordance with applicable financial reporting framework. So, I'm gonna read a, a quote from page four of the single audit report. Which is the opinion on regulatory basis of accounting by the State Board of Accounts. And I quote from page four. In our opinion, the final financial statement referred to above. Presents fairly in all material respects. The financial position and results of operations of the city of Michigan City. For the year ended December thirty first, two thousand eighteen, in accordance with the financial reporting provisions. Of the state of Indiana State Board of Accounts. So, just to alleviate any questions or concerns, I wanna make it very clear. You cannot get this unqualified opinion, this clean opinion, if all funds are not accounted for. You cannot get this unqualified opinion, this clean opinion, if there is any concern of missing money. So I just wanna put that to bed, um, contrary to, um, I'm told social media reports. That may have reflected otherwise. Uh, this audit, um, confirms that all funds are accounted for. And there is no missing money. This is what is referred to as the clean opinion. And anyone that says otherwise is wrong. Um, now onto um the second part of my report, which is outlining internal controls. As I said, every audit, every uh year we're audited. And every city across the state, um, that is audited and has gone through this process. Knows that there are always, uh, almost always audit comments. It's part of the process. Usually, as in our case, they have to do with internal controls. Cities receive these comments, they propose action plans to resolve them. And just to give a very simple example of what an internal control is. The, it's, the internal control, an example would be if you and your wife agree that you're gonna re- review the checkbook at the end of the month. Let's say you, um, review it, but your wife doesn't. Um, this is an internal control issue. It doesn't mean the checkbook is incorrect, but it does mean that there was not a technical review uh per, per the policy. Um, so in our world, we have a very large, um, policy book of. Hundreds of internal controls. And so, uh, when an internal control is not, uh, followed. Per the technical to the T, uh, it can be a comment in your audit report. The smart ci- cities, and we like to think we're in this category, look at, at this, these comments as a learning opportunity. Um, to improve our procedures, we receive the comments, we take them seriously. Uh, and we pro- propose corrective action plans and we move on. As we have the important job of running the city. And we have done so with this audit. We have proposed corrected action plans, which had been accepted by the state. And now we have implemented them. Uh, the third item I, I wanted to address is negative uh balance in the financial statement. Um, it is not uncommon for a city to have funds that ended two thousand eighteen with a negative balance. There are several reasons why this may happen. And the state asks you to explain in your report. Uh, why, um, why this happened and what is our plan uh about doing, about resolving the issue? And we have done so, um, in this report, in the notes section of, uh, note seven. In this case, our most notable fund is our Employee Medical Trust Fund. As you know, as the city council knows, the city continues to face the challenge of the rise in cost of healthcare. Um, every city's dealing with this. You can talk to mayors, city councils around the state of Indiana. It's probably the number one challenge uh by any city or corporation for that matter. As a city, um, i- in our case, I can say that we're doing something about it. We have taken action, we have done the due diligence. Um, in, um, we explained to council, to the city council in workshops over the last two years. Um, that the city paid record claims in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. And expended reserves that were mounted, mounting for employee healthcare. Our insurance carrier referred to this in our workshop as the fifty year flood of insurance claims. We had to pay these bills for our, our people and we did so. As the council is also aware, after a year of due diligence by the mayor and his team. Um, the city changed insurance carriers effective January first, two thousand nineteen. Um, this was a plan in order to reduce costs for two thousand nineteen and beyond. At mid-year, it appears that this strategy is working and costs have been significantly reduced. Last I checked, we were seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars lower cost this year than last year. The point is that we have stepped up to the uh plate and we've kind of, we faced the music on healthcare. Um, we faced the problem that every city has and we have a, a plan that. Now we have, we need some time to realize those cost reductions. In order to build reserves to pay for uh employees' healthcare. Now. Um, it's important to remember, we did not have a choice to pay these medical claims for our employees. It's our responsibility to do so. We're dealing with grave medical illnesses, uh, of employees and their families and we have to pay the bills. However, I, I just want to highlight that, um, we could have just reached for more money and more money and more money. Uh, but we were proactive with an action plan that says, let's do a year of study. Let's visit uh different sites in the region and in, in, in the country. About where they've had success on this and let's take action. So we implemented a new program. Um, it's working. We need some more time for that to work. Uh, but we do feel confident that over time we will uh be able to manage this uh cost of healthcare. Um, there are other reasons why a fund can be in the negative. Uh, perhaps the most common is that federal grant reimbursements. Um, did not get posted in time, uh, to be accounted for, which would otherwise have put the fund in the positive. And this is the case with the other uh funds that were in the negative. Um, these dollars have since been posted and we have explained this in detail in our report. In the case of a general fund, uh, over seven hundred thousand dollars of tra- federal transit grant funds were not posted. By December thirty first, two thousand eighteen. They were posted in nineteen. And the issue was resolved and we explained this to the auditors. They understood and accepted it to their satisfaction. Um, all has been explained on the negative balances to the satisfaction of the State Board of Accounts. Um, again, this is a brief overview of the, of the report, the highlights. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, just with one caveat, it is a lengthy report. So if I'm not able to answer the question right now, uh, my pledge would be to get back to uh the president and the full council with an explanation.
All right, uh, I was at the exit interview, uh, meeting. They didn't tell us the exact findings and that became out in the report later. Um, now, me looking at this, I mean, this is what I do for a school system. It, we need to seriously look at things or anywhere where someone is creating. A process and approving it, that needs to be immediately taken care of. Uh, that, that'll get you in a lot of trouble. Um, and then somebody, do we have someone that's gonna be up on the reconciliation of the bank statements on a monthly basis?
Yeah, and we're, we're almost caught up. That is, uh, we've gone, we've undergone extensive training this year. Uh, we've doubled, there are now multiple people that know how to run payroll in my office. And there's multiple people that are running uh reconciliation. So there's a better cross-training, uh, which has been an opportunity. Um, so, yes, to answer your question.
That, that was gonna be the next question I was gonna have is cross-training. Um, everybody needs to understand in that office what the other person does. So when they know something's not right. Uh, they're able to say, hey, you know, we need to fix something that's down the line, even uh if it's not their own job. That's gonna pro- protect the, the city, protect the department, uh, and keep you out of a hot water with State Board of Accounts. Um.
I would agree.
Yeah, and that, that's gonna be extremely important. And I just wanted to make an example. You know, we, we were talking about, uh, maybe about a month or so ago, um, I came up and asked for additional funds for the park department. They were in the same situation in regards to the golf course. Uh, they were requesting, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty. Uh, in order to keep their accounts from going into the negative. And this is something, you know, that they had their internal control in place to, to keep that from happening. So they came to us to avert that crisis before. Uh, they were clipped by State Board of Accounts. Um, and that's what, you know, that's how we have to take care of that. And I hope we can really get in, uh, up to date with reconciling those bank statements. Cause you, you brought the, the checkbook.
Yeah.
That would be like somebody just continuing to write checks and checks and checks and never, uh, reconciling with their bank statement. And we can get seriously, uh, damaged over that, fine. So I hope that internal control is in place. But, you know, just my suggestions, um, you know, I think this is my chance to give them. Um, is that we, you know, really take this serious and this requires a lot of time to. The controllers department of a, a city, it's a big, big job and it requires everybody's attention. Um, so I hope this, you know, we don't come across another report with these type of findings. Um, did the State Board of Accounts say whether they would be coming back to check on, uh, to see if things are implemented or is this gonna be on a yearly basis? A lot of times when they give a report.
Yeah.
And talk about this, they'll come just kind of out of the blue, six, almost three months or whatever.
Our plans, our corrective action plans have been implemented. So if they come, they will see that they've been implemented. Um, I, I guess they could come. Typically, they would revisit this in our next audit.
Okay. No questions, I have.
Questions, Councilman Perez Belinski?
Um, well, yeah, I have, uh, two questions or a couple of questions. And I, and I read this report. Um, with, uh, my prior, uh, service. Uh, I understand a little bit about it and actually, um, I saw in here that. Some of these things were repeat violations. And, uh, I mean, can you, can you address that?
Yes.
It's, it's, it wasn't like it was a, a new issue and, and they mentioned it more than once. And they're talking about, um, the water department and the sanitation department. And, y- you know, I, I don't think we can blame everything on just going to a new system. You know, it's, it's a internal, internal process. Um, you know, I, you were talking about this seven hundred thousand, is that a federal grant?
Yes.
Is that what was noted in the, uh?
Yeah, that's a transit grant.
Okay, well. How do you explain that if you had a, a, you got dinged in two thousand and seventeen? And, uh, you got dinged in two thousand and eighteen?
Well, I can explain that because.
Okay, please do.
Our two thousand seventeen audit ended in a December of two thousand eighteen. And our two thousand eighteen audit started in April. So there were some items that we weren't aware of that were wrong two times in a row. Uh, so we got written up twice in a row for them. Um, s- all those items are, um, have been resolved. In the case of the water department, um, we have a control where. They were providing reports to us, but they weren't providing a, uh, in the, what the State Board wanted is a source document. They have since been, uh, providing those. So all, all these issues are resolved. But sometimes it is a matter of timing and it doesn't seem fair that you would get written up twice, but that's just the way it goes. Um, but I, I assure you that all the, um, corrective action plans have been accepted. I had my first quarter corrective action plan meeting with all parties that were affected. And we took out these action plans and we said to Councilman Dabney's point, we don't wanna. See these items again. Um, it's, it's something that we can implement. And if we keep communicating, um, on a quarterly basis. By the time the auditors get here, we'll just be able to have, hand them a file and say, everything's there. That's, that's what our goal is. Um, the conversion was a challenge and, you know, I, I remind the council. And we, we also shared with the State Board, we put a system to bed that was twenty years old. And we went live with the system, uh, while we had to pay all the bills. And it was a challenging year. Um, so, uh, that's not an excuse, it's just a fact of, uh, why certain controls may. Have not been, uh, as detailed during that time period. Um, but we can, uh. That, that was a difficult, it was a challenge for us. We overcame it. Um, two thousand eighteen, we look back on in my office. Uh, nights there till three and four in the morning and weekends. Um, but our, our motto is, uh, we're always, we're getting better all the time. And we're, um, taking these issues seriously and, and moving ahead, uh, better every quarter. So. and, and moving ahead better every quarter. So.
Okay, well, one more, one more thing is that, you know, in the report on page eight, there's one thing that really caught my eye and it said that this was a systemic issue. So evidently it, it, you know, I'm, I, what my point is, is that it wasn't like you never had been through an audit and could figure out what, what you should, I don't know, correct. But I, I really got to ask this question. Were you having a problem with the water and sanitation on their accounting practices?
No.
Okay, so it was.
No, it was, it was, it was related to the conversion and to Councilman Dabney's point, just being a little bit behind on being reconciled, which caused challenges. But we are reconciled now through today and you know, we're moving, we're looking forward.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman Simmons, are you keeping up with Gateway?
Yes.
Okay. When was the last entry into Gateway?
Uh, we had to enter our public hearing for tonight's budget. That was probably our last entry into Gateway. Before that, it would have been our Form 1 and throughout the budget process, the various forms. But yes, we are, we are all up to date with Gateway.
For the public's info, this is a public access tool for citizens. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, this, this report can be accessed online, www.in.gov, GOV. Search for audits. You'll see it. It's a public document.
So yeah, I was also present at the, the exit interview and I was wondering, why weren't we notified when the report was made available? I actually found out because someone was on the internet reading it out loud and my phone was getting blown up because they were like, hey, did you know about this or what's this? And because I was present at that interview, we were legally bound not to comment about it until the report was actually released. But the report had been released several weeks prior to someone on the internet finding it. So why were we not notified when the report came out?
Yeah, I, I actually got that question from Councilman Dabney and I explained that. There is a process. When an audit is ready to be certified, all parties have to certify it. So we have to certify it as a city, which we do electronically, and then the auditors have to do it on their end electronically. Once everybody certifies, and I think we, we were notified the first week of September that we were ready to certify. That means you got your last look at the audit. You're going to take your last look and say, I certify this. And we did that. Once all parties certify, it's released from a federal clearinghouse website to the state board of accounts automatically. So we were, we weren't ever notified that it was posted. We were just notified that we have, we have no other actions needed. And so that's the reason.
And one other question. So during that process, it was sort of discussed about some ghost payrolling or some funds that didn't seem to be where they were supposed to be in relation to payroll. Was that ever rectified or was identified?
Yeah, and I, I, there was not any discussion of ghost payrolling. I believe there was some inaccuracies on time cards that has since been resolved.
So, okay, inaccuracies on time cards, meaning someone was being paid for work that you're not performing?
No, I believe at the time someone was not aware of the form that you complete in order to change a time card that's wrong or if you forget to punch. And there's a, there's a standard form that has to be approved by a supervisor and that, I believe that employee was not aware of that. So there were some manual entries and that has since been addressed. Okay, thank you.
This is, yeah, this, this will be the last question. In regards to manual entries, I think a serious control would be not to allow an employee to go in and make a manual entry. They should be, you know, if they, what they punch in or whatever, but to be able to go in and make a manual entry.
I would agree with you.
Because that is, that is a serious control that is going to get us killed. So we really got to take that power away from anybody that can go in and make a manual entry like that to their time card because.
I agree and it's been addressed.
Okay.
Any other council members have questions?
I have a few questions. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Uh, first of all, and like Councilman Fitzpatrick addressed, being in the closing meeting and then after you're in that meeting, you cannot say anything until the report comes back out by state law. We're bound not to say anything. Okay. But then when the report did come out, like Councilman Fitzpatrick says, I was on my way home from Michigan and I saw some people on Facebook actually reading the report. And you know, us being on the city council and being involved with this audit, you know, why weren't we told the report is on such and such? You can go look at it. It's like, forget the council, let everybody else find out where it's at and we'll find out on Monday morning and go to the, or go to the city clerk's office and we'll get a copy from the clerk. She'll take care of it for us. I'm, I'm disappointed with that. And I'm, I'm disappointed and I've been through audits in my lifetime where I used to work at. And to me, this is not a good report. I'm not impressed by it. You know, there were findings. There was corrective actions. Okay, we're done. You know, what are we going to do next go around? You know, and I know that some of the council members just touched on these things, but I want to bring up, bring up a couple of findings so that people know what we're talking about. And the first one I want to bring up, and this here is that first one finding 2018, 001. And that's the one, and this is a repeat finding from 2017. There were several, the condition is there were several deficiencies in the internal control system of the city related to financial transactions and reporting. There was a lack of segregation of duties as the city had not separated incompatible activities related to cash, investments, receipts, dispersments and financial reporting. The city and sanitary district, the city and sanitary district each had employees who were responsible for ensuring that their respective ledgers were reconciled with the bank depository balances. Effective controls were not in place to ensure that the depository reconcilments were performed accurately and timely. Reconcilements for 2018 were unperformed as of June 5th, 2019. So, what is that, almost a year, right? A year later? Officials completed its December 31st, 2018 reconcilments on June 20th. So six months later, now we completed the reconcilments that were supposed to take place in December 2018. How do you explain that?
Could I comment on the first item first?
Sure.
So in 17, we did not
This is your report.
We did not have a
Explain to the city.
In 17, we did not have a mechanism whereby you could approve journals and fundware. In 18, we implemented where now you, you cannot make an entry without requiring someone else to have an, an approval process. When they looked at entries in 18, this is why it was, when they found it in 17, in 18, we were going live with the system. By the end of 18, we had turned on that mechanism, which requires an approval, but they were looking at a transition, a conversion, and they just sampled documents. They said, let's pull this one and that one did not have the approval. That issue has been resolved for, for several months.
Yeah. But did you know that this was going on and that these reconcilments weren't being done? Like they should have been on a monthly basis?
We acknowledged, we acknowledged that we were behind on reconciliations.
At the audit?
Yes.
I'm talking prior to that.
Yeah, I was aware and we were working to resolve that.
Then why weren't we doing and making sure everything was up to date?
We, we were doing that. That's why we were here till three and four in the morning.
Putting in a new system. Okay. Companies put in new systems every day, but they also make sure that the work that needs to be done is being done. So you don't fall behind if you do have an audit.
Right.
To me, putting in a new system isn't an excuse to fall behind on an audit.
It's not an excuse. It's just a fact. And you know, I bring it up because we had, it's a once in a generation kind of experience to go through a total financial software conversion. That is the, a lot of the reason why we fell behind on reconciliations. And you know, I mean, all I can say is that it's been resolved. If, you know, we try not to look backward. We want to look forwards.
No, I understand. I understand it's been resolved, but it sits here on a audit finding that it was a problem, a systemic problem. And that kind of stuff goes on through this whole report. And then, and then to find out, you know, that the reconciled depository balance, I think this was at the water department. No, the city and it was off by $60,000, correct?
The reconciled, the reconcilments for the entire city were off by that much.
Yeah, it was off by $60,000.
That's not material. And that's why it's not a material finding.
$60,000.
I know. It's not a material finding. And that's why we got an unqualified opinion. And that's why we got a clean opinion. Because that is not material. When you have a $50 million budget.
So let me move on then. The water department had employees who were responsible for ensuring that their ledgers were reconciled with the bank depository balances. Effective controls were not in place to ensure that depository reconcilments were performed accurately and timely. All utility collections were deposited and subsequently dispersed from the transfer fund bank account into all of the utility bank accounts and funds. The December 31st, 2018 transfer fund bank reconcilment was not presented for the audit. As of May 20th, 2019, the bank reconcilment had not been completed. So there we go again. We're behind six months and we're still not completed. Even when the auditors were here, we weren't completing.
But we are now.
I know we are now. Well, we weren't back then. To me, that's where, that's where the finding is coming from.
We've explained, we've explained why. You know, again, we're not looking back. We're not going to go beat ourselves up about what happened in 2018 when all those problems are resolved. We're, we're moving forward. We have a new system. We're more accurate. It's, it's, it's better projection going forward. We're looking forward.
I'm not, I don't want to sit here and read every one of these findings. Although there is one finding I do want to read. There is one I want to touch on. And that was with that payroll issue. Let me find it. I mean, we could probably sit here till 8:30 and go through this thing. But I think all I'm going to do is hear the same answer. We've moved forward and you know, we're not, we're not worried about this stuff.
It's not that we're not worried about it. It's that we take it seriously, but we don't dwell on it. We're moving forward because these issues are resolved.
Okay, here it is. The city had not designated or implemented adequate policies and procedures to ensure that payroll dispersments were owing for program costs and that the appropriate supporting documentation was available in grade to agree to the payroll dispersments. It says here, the personnel service, services amounts were reported on the drawdown vouchers and reimbursed as follows. The city claimed a portion of a employee's gross pay over nine months totaling $1,902. It did not meet the program objective and is considered a questioned cost. The city claimed one employee's portion of the gross pay totaling $1,495 over 13 payrolls without any supporting documentation for the time spent on program activities. So we just paid somebody $1,900.
No, we, what happened was, uh,
It said here that there was no supporting documentation.
There was no documentation, but we, it was paid because a percentage of a certain employee's role in the CDBG office is dedicated to, a small percentage, very small percentage, is dedicated to a non-CDBG project and we were not aware of that. Now we are and that issue has been corrected.
Okay. The time records for two employees did not agree with the number of hours paid, which resulted in overpayments of $103 and 459 respectively. That's not a lot of money, but still we're giving people money for nothing. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anyway, totaling up the area, the errors resulted in known questioned costs of $3,874 of money that we gave away. So, okay. And then, yeah, now you just have one more question.
You didn't give anything away. The employee was paid for the time worked. When they applied for the grant reimbursement, they didn't properly identify the fact that that employee, which was getting reimbursed by the grant, wasn't working 100% of the time for the grant. So
Correct.
They got more grant money back than they should, the city did, than it should have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Myers. And he's just getting back to that $700,000 grant, which was not posted. Can you explain that?
Yes.
And what that means as a finding?
It, well, it means nothing. It's a timing issue in the county. So it wasn't posted by December 31st. Once the state board knew it was posted, they understood. The reason was this, we, when you apply for federal grant reimbursement, you have to have a approved user ID and password portal to enter the federal trans, FTA website. That was also the same year that our deputy controller, Yvonne Hoffmaster, retired. She, that was her, in her role of responsibilities is to request that, those reimbursements. When we went to do that in 2018, again, this was during the conversion, we did not have a user ID or portal and we requested one when, as soon as we knew in order to be able to post by the year end. That was the year, if you remember, there was an extensive government shutdown and we were not able to request that, or we did not hear back on the, the user ID and pass, and password until we missed the end of the year deadline. As soon as we received that, those credentials, those postings were made and that is explained in the report.
Okay, Councilman Prisbalinski, I think you have one more question.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Prisbalinski.
That's going to get old.
Little, well, a little levity never hurts, you know. But in all seriousness, you know, as you go through the report and on page 25, it talks about the sanitary district and these are some findings in there. And it, it just says that, I'm going to read it, "As a result of a lack of effective controls, electronic funding transfers totaling $173,000 deposited in 2018 were not recorded in a city sanitary district ledgers as of July 2019." I think that's a serious infraction. "The city dispersed funds through electronic payments and posted the transactions via a journal entry. These payments were not approved by the fiscal These payments were not approved by the fiscal officer or appropriate governing board at a public meeting. I think that's a serious finding also. So I'm not taking this light and I don't think anybody should. And Mr. Murphy, you keep saying we got a clean audit. There's a lot of stuff in there and I think we could probably go on till midnight picking through this audit. And, and I think that, I understand that you put a new system in, but let me ask you something. Exactly where was this money? Or these totals funding? Where was it at? I mean, was it not distributed through the water department? Because they collect all the billing. Explain that to me, how this happened.
I, are you referring to the EFT?
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm.
Okay, well, first of all, it's, it's an internal controls issue.
Oh, internal control, alright.
An EFT that needs to be, uh, approved on a docket is what we do. As, as Councilman Dabney knows, everything's on a docket now. If it's an EFT, it's on a docket. You guys have seen that. That's a change. That, we didn't norm, we didn't have to do that before. Now, if we transfer riverboat money, it's on the docket. Look at tonight's, uh, agenda, community crossings. The council sees all the monies that are moved. That wasn't necessarily a requirement. Now, in our system, that is built in. So any money we ever move, if it's from the riverboat, even though you approved it in the budget, when we move that money, it's on a docket. When we approve a journal, it has to be, it's a built-in requirement. So what that's referring to is it, it's, it's not a serious infraction is, is it wasn't improper, but the documentation, the technical review step was not made. And that's what the internal controls issue is. That's what a lot of this report is. And having been through three audits, internal controls is something that the state board is, they want more internal controls. They want more oversight by the fiscal body. So every time they go to all these cities across Indiana, they're finding, they find internal controls issues. And you, like I said, you listen, you take them seriously and you propose corrective action plans. That's what we've done.
Okay, but still, I gotta ask you this. Did you send out any emails to anybody because of, from their first audit to get their act together? To make them aware that, hey, we got an audit here and you guys better start getting, uh, whatever you, whatever, did you send?
I've had, no, I've had quarterly meetings.
You've had quarterly meetings?
With all the departments that are impacted by these internal controls issue. Where we reviewed every corrective action plan and we said, this is what everybody has to do. We just, we had a, a meeting a week ago and every department that was on this internal controls comment was there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President Preszbalinski.
I just have one, one question.
Yeah, Councilman Fitzpatrick, go ahead.
So you mentioned a deputy controller, Yvonne Hoffmaster retired. Was, is she the only person able to do the, the task that was assigned at that time when she retired?
Yeah, she was the only one that had the credentials for the federal transit authority, uh, website, but that's been since corrected.
Okay, and who was the controller at that time?
Me.
Okay.
So getting back to that hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars at the, uh, sanitary district. And that transfer and the reason it came up in the audit. What if we wouldn't, what if we wouldn't have, what if we wouldn't have had an audit? And that money would be floating out there? What if that had happened?
It's just, it's a, it's a technical review issue. If we didn't have an audit, then they wouldn't have found out that nobody followed step eighteen B, you know? So I mean, it, it's, like I said, the, the comments on the internal controls are focused on the technical review process. So we have a technical review process. If we miss a step, then it could be a potential comment. And, uh, you know, in, I would, uh, every city that had an audit this year had, virtually every city had internal controls comments. And I, I know that because I've looked at the other audits.
Okay, I'm done, I'm done with my, uh, my questions because I'm sure I'll get, I'll get the same, uh, you know, responses on all of them, but you know, if anybody wants a copy of this, you can go online and get it. I'm sure that the city clerk would be happy to give you a copy of it. Uh, I, I hope, I, I, I hope, I hope that the next audit that we get from the state board of accounts is a lot better than this one. Because I'm not, I'm not impressed with it. So with that being said, any, any other comments from council members or questions of Mr. Murphy? Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
All right. I don't believe there's any other city officers here tonight or department heads. Moving down to the claims docket. We have a claims docket for Fund Twenty Forty-two Riverboat Claims of seventy-five thousand, six hundred ten dollars and fifty-one cents. Uh, the next one is, uh, I believe it's the Energy.
It's EFTs.
Yeah, Energy Savings Group. EFT?
EFT.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Electronic funds transfers that we now have to approve through the docket.
Yep, okay, that's a one hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred seventy dollars and ninety-one cents. And then Fund Twenty Thirty-one, the boy development of two thousand, one hundred four dollars and fifty-three cents for a total of two hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Is there a motion to approve the docket?
So move.
Scored.
Motion to approve by Councilman Preszbalinski and was that Councilman Fitzpatrick or was that Councilman Dabney? Okay, motion in a second to approve the claims docket. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Claims will be paid. Any, uh, Ms. Nyalup? Any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Uh, please go through the communications.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on September thirteenth from NICD regarding the double track Northwest Indiana project. Correspondence was also received on September sixteenth and September twenty-third from DLZ, their weekly activity report ESG energy project. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on September sixteen from John Kirk, field observation report on ESG solar panel project at fire station four, Patriot Park, senior center and punch list inspection of park maintenance. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on September twentieth from John Kirk as well as the field observation for the same projects. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyalup. And our first resolution before us this evening by title only, without objection, Ms. Nyalup?
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the Michigan City, Indiana Common Council granting Solair LLC an assessed valuation deduction tax abatement for deprecable personal property pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one, one dash twelve, um, one. And this is introduced by Mr. Beatty and Mr. Simmons.
And do the authors have anything they would like to add at this time, Mr. Simmons?
I'm just delighted that Solair is, uh, reinvesting and they're experiencing, uh, market growth and they're attempting to address that issue by reinvesting, uh, somewhere around twenty-four million dollars. Uh, hopefully, with this reinvestment, they will be adding at least thirty, thirty-three more salary and hourly wage, uh, wages. And that's what we are all looking for constantly is manufacturing to reinvest. Stay here in the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Simmons. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Clarence Hall, CD CMC Director. Glad to be here. Uh, tonight you have before you a world-class, uh, global company, Michigan City, uh, Solair Hitachi. Um, we've been talking about them, about what they've been doing for the past two years and we finally are done to the wire. Uh, they're looking to expand, um, Michigan City with some new product lines, upgrading their equipment. Uh, looking to build on eighty thousand square feet, uh, brand new, uh, building. Um, they're looking at, as, as, uh, Councilman Simmons says, over thirty-three new employees. And just so you know, they've been hiring the past two years. They've had over fifty new people. So they, they have not stopped hiring since they've changed hands. So they're, they keep hiring and we want to see them keep growing here in Michigan City. It's a great company, uh, great, uh, great, um, good, great jobs and also, um, good, good, um, for our community. And this is, uh, as, uh, something else to note, they're very involved in the community. Uh, they were the first one to put their money where their mouth was. Uh, October twenty-first, eight AM at Michigan City High School, we have the compressed air academy, um, ribbon cutting. And something for us to be proud of, this is the only school in the nation that teaches kids how to do a repair and air compressor. Uh, most other places have, uh, operations or manufacturing certificate. But Michigan City High School, Michigan City, Indiana is gonna have the only air compressor academy in the nation. So something to be real proud of. So hope to see you there eight o'clock, um, October twenty-first at Michigan City High School. I'm gonna introduce, uh, Mr. Joe Mays. He's the senior operations, um, senior project manager for this project. So he can answer any questions for you and the whole team is here by the way from Solair, so.
Good evening, folks. Uh, again, thank you so much for having us here today. We appreciate it. I'm Joe Mays, senior project manager with Solair. Been here, oh, ten or eleven months of the company and I'm pretty excited about it. Uh, we have someone to thank Clarence as well as councilmen and women and the Michigan City departments we met with a few, a couple of weeks ago to go over some of the plans. Again, Hitachi's vision aspiration is to grow. We want to grow that footprint right here in Michigan City. It's a lot of the work that, uh, we need to do to grab more market share as well as with the quality employees and quality, um, people of Michigan City. So we do a lot of hiring around here. Um, we've manufactured air compressors and have for a good fifty-plus years. So we're pretty excited about that. Uh, the investment, as I mentioned earlier, is twenty-four point four million dollars in capital. So that's gonna be a lot of equipments and a lot of building, eighty thousand square foot building. And another eighty-five thousand square feet of covered canopy, I'll call it, so that we can keep some of our uh, products and parts dry and out of the, out of the elements. And then, as you mentioned earlier, thirty-three salary and hourly, hourly employees. Uh, good wages, good benefits. So as a, as a guy who grew up in impoverished conditions, I'm happy to always be adding jobs. So I'm pretty excited about that as part of this project. And this is one of the largest capital, capital projects in Solair history. So it's fantastic for us as well as the community. And I'm excited to continue this relationship with you guys, its council and the city and with Hitachi and Solair as well. So I just want to thank you for your time tonight and your energy reviewing all the documentation. I'm sure you had to review, which was a good stack of that. So if you have any questions for me, happy to field any of those.
Yeah, are there any questions from council members? Councilman Preszbalinski?
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Hayes, um, how many hourly jobs are you looking at creating?
Twenty-seven plus.
Twenty-seven?
So twenty-seven is our current estimate. If market conditions exceed expectations, we could see as much as five to eight more.
And, uh, what, what is a starting, uh, increment in, in that, are you gonna be hiring like, uh, machinists or any?
Assemblers, machinists, absolutely. Yep, and we'll start that probably next spring. So we'll start growing that now from a salary to getting all the engineering, all that kind of thing built up. And then we'll start in the spring with hourly, trying to get people trained and ready to run equipment in the fall.
What's the starting salary for labor? Or do you start somebody at a labor position or do they hire in?
So the starting salary for hourly is seventeen dollars an hour. Yeah, position dependent.
Is how much?
Seventeen dollars an hour, depending on the position.
Seventeen thousand base pay?
Seventeen dollars an hour.
Seventeen dollars an hour.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. And how many, uh, construction jobs you think you're gonna be creating?
About eighty is my estimate, yep.
Are they gonna be, uh, are they gonna be union contractors or union people?
Yes.
Are you gonna use, uh, American steel in your project?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
It's important.
It is important.
Especially here in steel country.
No, it, excuse me, with that comment, a lot of people don't realize, really don't realize how the American steel industry has been devastated by unfair competition. I'm lucky, I'm very lucky to be employed for a long time at where I work. And, uh, that is steel. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments by council members? I just have a couple of comments. Uh, number one, I, I am gonna support this, uh, this resolution, no doubt. One thing I was really amazed of is, uh, and I didn't realize it until I read this report, that Solair, they have, let's just say, four hundred and seventy, five hundred employees, okay, rounded off to five hundred. And they have an annual salary base of thirty-three million dollars, a payroll of thirty-three million dollars a year. Is that true? Okay, all right. That's amazing. I never knew that. But that's fantastic.
Adds up fast.
Yeah.
Almost five hundred employees, so.
That's great. Now, is this gonna be, are there, is Hitachi moving the world air compressor headquarters to Michigan City? Did I read that or no?
Oh, I don't believe that's the case. No, they are localizing some of the products they manufacture overseas into Michigan City.
All right. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would wish to speak on this resolution?
William Perry, twenty-two oh six Maple Street. Uh, what's the duration of the tax abatement?
Uh, this one here, Mr. Perry? Uh, this is, the one in front of us here is for five, five years. Okay, all right. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Got a sore back. Uh, Joe Corr, thirty-seven sixty-eight North, five twenty-five West, La Porte County. Um, when I started my company fifty-some years ago, we started working in a solar plant, uh, that was originally built. I don't think there's a year that's gone by where there hasn't been some type of construction work, some kind of building addition, some kind of equipment, some kind of electrical, plumbing, mechanical, whatever. They have done everything on a union basis in the construction area since I've been involved for all these years. So Hitachi Solair, I think, has a goal, not speaking out of turn here, to be the world builder in relationship to air compressors. Can you imagine that? Not only do we have a national park recognition, you're probably gonna have a national setup here with an air compressor manufacturer. So I think we need to certainly thank Mayor Mira for everything he's done. All you council members, all the department heads that helped facilitate and put this together for everyone involved. Um, it could not have been better. And on behalf of myself and I always add my wife to this, um, we hope you'll support this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corr. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Every non-public comment is over. Any council comment?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Hamilton?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve this resolution by Councilman Hamilton and seconded by Councilman Paul Preszbalinski. Ms. Nyalup, on the vote?
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Mr. Stemley. We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyalup. Our next res- resolution by title only, without objection, please, Ms. Nyalup?
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the Michigan City, Indiana Common Council granting Solair Corporation an assessed valuation deduction tax abatement for real property pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one, one dash twelve, one. And this is also introduced by Mr. Beatty and Mr. Simmons.
And does the author have anything he'd like to add at this time?
Not at this time. Okay.
Not at this time, okay. Anyone from the public which should speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public which should speak on this resolution? Mr. Hallz, if you would, could you come to the microphone here? Could you just explain this resolution? I know it's a little different than...
There are two resolutions. One just went on, the one was for equipment, so that's personal property. This one is for real estate, which involves the billing. So by a lot, you're going to separate them, you can't put them all together.
Yeah, and this, the last one was for?
Was for five years, and this one is for seven years.
For seven years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to get that information out there. Okay. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this resolution? Having none, public comment is over. Is there any council comment? Any council comment, Mr. Hamilton?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and seconded by Councilman Paul Pris Walensky. Ms. Nyalov, on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Uh, no, correct, take that back. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Pris Walensky?
Don Pris Walensky?
We'll never get this.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Pris Walensky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stemley? And then Mr. Bryant, Dabney.
Aye.
I know, I already asked you. Seven to zero, seven in favor.
You have to vote twice.
Yeah, you get to vote twice, one for Sharon, and one for Tim. Seven in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyalov. And I would just like to thank Clarence Hallz and the Solar team that's here this evening. You do a great job for Michigan City. We appreciate that you're here. We hope you stay here forever, and I'll be there Friday morning at 10 o'clock for the groundbreaking.
Fantastic.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Ms. Nyalov, our fourth, third resolution, by title only, without objection?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the Fire Department in a General Fund 1001 for the year 2019 in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Pris Walensky.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyalov. And we talked about this during the budget hearings, and what, there was a line item in the budget, in the 2019 budget, that was put in there for $26,000 for diesel fuel, but we never used that line item because the Fire Department was getting their diesel fuel from the central services, okay? So with that being said, that $26,000 just stayed in the diesel account. What we're doing is we're taking it out of the diesel account and putting it into the other services and contractual services for the Fire Department. So that's the basis of the resolution. Is there anyone from the public here that wishes to speak on this resolution? Anyone here from the public which should speak on the resolution? Anyone here from the public which should speak on the resolution? Having none, public comment is over. Council comments? Councilman Hamilton?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion to approve by Councilman Hamilton, and seconded by Councilman Dabney. Ms. Nyalov, on the vote, please.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Pris Walensky?
Don Pris Walensky?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Pris Walensky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stemley?
Aye.
And Mr. Bryant Dabney?
Aye.
And Mr. Sean Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Nyalov.
No, why are you so formal with me?
And our first ordinance this evening, on first reading, by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, requiring the city controller to provide the common council documentation regarding damage to city property and payment of liability claims, and creating Section 2-324 in the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Pris Walensky, Mr. Stemley, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Hamilton. You guys are throwing me off.
And do the authors have anything that they would like to add at this time? None? Okay. Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none, council comments on this ordinance? Okay, I would like to make comments on this ordinance, and what this is going to do, I believe, for more accountability from the departments in the city, that a lot of times, the majority of the time, city council members are not notified of damage to vehicles, they're not made aware of theft that's going on in departments, although at budget time, we're the body that approves the money for tools, equipment, and things like that, and then when you ask, well, what happened to the two chainsaws we bought you last year? Well, they got stolen. Oh, well, you know, we didn't find out, how come we, nobody ever tells us that things get stolen, or why did it get stolen, or, you know, what are your controls going on down at your department? So with that being said, that's why this is being into, being put into ordinance, and the same thing with vehicles. Take, for example, uh, let's see, I know we got $5,000 here if a piece of equipment, dump truck, police car, what have you, gets hurt, but I think that through a little bit more discussion, maybe some amendments, that those amounts may be lowered. But anyway, that's the purpose of this ordinance, is for transparency and accountability back to the city council, so we know what's going on with the city equipment. Any other comments from council members? Any other council members? This will be held over for a second reading at our October 15th council meeting. Okay, Ms. Nyalov, our next ordinance on first reading?
An ordinance on?
By title only, without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending Section 2-459B6 of the Michigan City Municipal Code to provide for a treasurer for the Commission for Women. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
And would the author like to add anything at this time?
Yeah, this is just amending the ordinance, creating the Women's, the Michigan City Commission for Women, to include language that reflects the role and duties of their treasurer. There was not initially placed into the ordinance, so they just wanted to acknowledge that the treasurer be accountable for the roles and duties, and it to be part of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none, any further council comments? Any further council comments? Any further council comments? This ordinance will be held over for second reading at our October 15th meeting. And our first reading, first ordinance on second reading, by title only, without objection. Ms. Nyalov?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, repealing and replacing Article 8 and Chapter 46 in the Michigan City Municipal Code, commonly known as the flood plains. And this is introduced by Ms. Carnes.
And I know Ms. Carnes isn't here this evening, so there's no comments from the author. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council comments? Any council comments? Any council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be held over to our October 15th meeting. Next ordinance, on second reading, Ms. Nyalov, by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating Section 22-54 in Chapter 22 of the Michigan City Municipal Code to be known as the Building Permit Conflict of Interest. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And does the author have anything he'd like to add at this time?
None at this time.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none, any further council comments? Any further council comments? Councilman Pris Walensky?
I have a question on that. Is this just updating the code from state law that was passed, right? More or less?
Correct. State law was amended.
Okay.
And required this to be added to the code.
Okay.
Okay, any other council comments? Having none, this will be held over for third reading at our October 15th meeting. Okay, our next ordinance on second reading, by title only, without objection. Ms. Nyalov?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating Section 22-85 in Chapter 2 of the Michigan City Municipal Code to be known as Prevention of Contractor Payroll Fraud. And this is introduced by Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Don Pris Walensky.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time?
I just asked if we could have their reading on this tonight, so it's fast.
Okay, there's a motion for second and third readings this evening. Is there a, we need a second? No? Is there?
Verify that it's unanimous. No, why not check?
Yeah, is there any objections? Is there any objections for third reading this evening? With no objection, we're going to have second and third reading this evening. Ms. Nyalov? Pardon? Okay. All right, we have a public comment at this time? Public comment on this ordinance? Public comment? Okay. Having none, is there any council comment? Is there any council comment? Any council comment? Councilman Pris Walensky?
Thank you, Councilman Pris Walensky. I would like to, I would like to say that, as being a union person, that the construction trades have taken lots of hits in recent years, and when I read this and I heard the explanation at the last meeting, I was really gassed on the kind of garbage that can go on and is being allowed, allowed to happen, and is, and, I mean, I think it's a good, I think it's a good ordinance to pass and help stabilize the wages of these, and furthermore, to enhance the union-represented workers on construction. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, Ms. Nyalov, we will go on to third reading, by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating Section 22-85 in Chapter 2 of the Michigan City Municipal Code to be known as Prevention of Contractor Payroll Fraud. And this is introduced by Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Don Pris Walensky.
And again, does the author have anything he'd like to add at this time? Okay? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any public comment? Any council comment on this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Councilman Hamilton, and seconded by Councilman Pris Walensky. And I just want to add a couple of comments here, just so the general public knows, you know, what we're doing here, and how we are trying to promote the unions and good-paying jobs, union-paying jobs, by things that happen in the construction trade that I'm sure a lot of people aren't aware of. But anyway, I'm going to read the Whereas Clause. It says, "Whereas certain employers commit payroll fraud to avoid withholding income taxes, paying employment taxes, paying overtime, and workers' compensation premiums. And whereas payroll fraud gives irresponsible employers more advantage in labor costs, and as a result thereof, in a competitive industry like construction, responsible employers lose work, and the state and federal government loses tax dollars. And in my opinion, we lose quality work. Now, therefore be it ordained," well, anyway, that we're going to go ahead and approve this ordinance. So I just wanted to explain that to the general public, that the Michigan City Common Council is here to work with the unions, so we keep fantastic, livable wage jobs in our community. So, with that being said, there was a motion to approve by Councilman Hamilton, seconded by Councilman Paul Pris Walensky. Ms. Nyalov, on the vote?
Don Pris Walensky?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Pris Walensky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stemley?
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
All right.
Councilman? Councilman, or President Pris Walensky, I am asking for a five-minute recess.
Okay, five-minute recess.
Is that perfect or not perfect? Stop it.
Rejoining the meeting, and we are moving on to our next ordinance on second reading, which is a budget hearing. So we are going to have a public hearing for the budget, but, Ms. Nyalov, if you would, please, read the ordinance by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Okay, and does the author have anything that he would like to add at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay. Is there?
He should make his amendments.
Yeah. Doing amendments now?
Okay, all right.
All right.
Yeah, now, can we, if all the council members agree to it, we can vote on the whole package, or if a council member wants to pull any of the amendments out and make a motion on it for whatever reason, then you're allowed to do that. So, with that being said, Councilman Dabney?
First I'll ask, does anybody have any of those recommendations of the Finance Committee, you know, to bring those out? If not, like you said, we'll make a motion to take them all. Someone does, wants to bring one out, we'll do a separate vote on that one. They'll have any? Okay, hearing none? Go ahead, John.
Well, no, there was, there was one item that we were talking about discussing now. Does that have to be discussed now, or when we get to that particular portion for the ordinance, for that ordinance?
Yeah, you can go ahead and bring up the issue with the, it's not in that, it's not reflected in that, but...
Yeah, it's not in the amendments, but it's in the budget.
But if we, if we vote on this, then it would approve it.
No, it's just amendment, no.
Just those amendments.
Right. Is this not in there?
Okay.
It's not in there.
At this time, it's not in there. At this time, it's not in there.
All right, I make a motion, uh, to approve the recommended, uh, recommended cuts of the finance committee. Uh, that is, I read those into the record earlier, uh, this evening.
Support. Second.
No, that's okay. There was a motion by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilman Hamilton to re, to vote on the amendments as he presented them earlier this evening. Uh, in this evening, we were going to have a, uh, public hearing on the budget. A vote on the amendments first? Okay, uh, Ms. Nyelov on the vote for the amendments to the budget?
Mr. Paul Presvalinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stemley? Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
And Mr. Presvalinsky.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and then no one opposed.
Okay, and this ordinance will be held over for third reading at our. Okay, okay. All right, at this time, we're gonna have the public hearing on the budget. We're gonna have the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on the budget? Anyone here from the public who should speak about the budget? Anyone here from the public who should speak on the budget? Public, uh, okay, please.
I just wanna say, I, I went through the budget with you guys.
Name and address for the record, please.
Two, two, three, East Bark Grab.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, I went through the budget with you guys and I totally understand it, but I still feel, and I've always felt that the clerk's office is not getting compensated fairly for everything that they do. We, we have other people on the, the city staff who don't do near as much work as that office does and who make a lot more money. It would be nice if someone along the line, we could find a way to increase their pay, to make their job more, um, complete because they really do work hard for the money that they get in that office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stransky. Anyone else from the public who should speak on the budget? Anyone else from the public who should speak on the budget? Public hearing is now over. Are there any comments from the, uh, council?
President Prince Valinsky, I would like to, uh, make a motion for, uh, amendments on third reading, and not a motion, but unanimous consent for, to, so we can, uh, in the process of gathering further information about a, uh, particular subject in the police budget.
There has been a, uh, motion for unanimous consent for amendments on third reading. Uh, Mr. Myers, do I have to get a second on that or do we just vote on us? Okay, is there anybody objecting to that? No objections? Okay. Okay, so, uh, it's passed. There's no, uh, uh, no one disagreeing to it, so we will have, uh, motion on, no, on third readings, we'll be able to make amendments to this ordinance. Okay? All right.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome. All right, worked our way through that. The, uh, next ordinance on second reading. Ms. Nyelov, by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only and ordinance setting salaries and wages for appointed officials and employees of the City of Michigan City, Indiana for the calendar year two thousand twenty. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And does the author have anything he'd like to add at this time?
No, uh, just a quick comment, just to say, uh, just as it reads and we are, uh, setting the salaries and wages for the appointed officials here in, uh, for the two thousand twenty year.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Dabney. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comments? Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, so, uh, since this was my first time being on the finance committee and, uh, going through the budgets, uh, I learned a lot. I know that our departments are really top-heavy, so we mostly have a lot of people making fifty, sixty plus, uh, a year salaries. And then we still have people within our city departments that are making seven dollars an hour. For some reason, that, that just doesn't, it does not make sense to me. I mean, we have all this economic growth. The city's open for business, as we like to say all the time. But you can get a job at Popeyes making more than you can working for the city. I think we should be doing better and we should offer our people more, especially our seasonal people, the people that are part-time, that are working just as hard as anyone else. Uh, I, I think it's a little bit, you know, disrespectful and I'm a little bit offended that at this day and age in two thousand nineteen, we're still so close to what the, uh, federal minimum wage is.
Thank you, Councilman. Very good comments. Councilman Stemley?
Um, I was gonna say this, uh, council comment, but since Sean brought it up too, like, did they make the recommendation for the budget to have the seasonals at a minimum of nine dollars an hour, which I didn't go through. So hopefully next year, we can get appropriation to make this happen. Thanks.
Good comment, Councilman. Any other council comments? Councilman Hamilton?
I just got one question and I know our controller can't answer this question right now, but, and we've looked at this and I talked to a few council members in the council study. When Ms. Boy was on the council and Mr. Esper, Esper had a complete breakdown of what it would cost us to increase the employees' pay per dollar raise overall to the city. Is there a way you could put something together and get it to the council? That way there, they can understand, you know, how many seven-dollar-an-hour employees we have, how many eight-dollar? And then that way there, we can kind of levelize and they can get their numbers. So, thank you.
Councilman Prince Valinsky?
Well, you know, I, I agree with those comments that you, you've all made and, and we've seen it and, uh, it's, it's, it's disturbing. It is disturbing. And also that there's one factor in here that I think, um, needs to be taken into consideration is I think the lifeguards should be making more money so you can attract these people, you know, and, and, uh, you know, it's, I, I complained about that years ago and they finally raised the rate, the rate for those people. And I think they created a senior lifeguard and some other things. But, but you know, what we were talking about in this ordinance, in the ordinances for the wages is that, and we've seen it, that I think there's room to make way for people who are in charge, say, like, taking, uh, a maintenance check and being responsible for the vehicles that they're driving. And that, okay, you're gonna be like a crew leader position. There's ways to get people some money, but hey, you gotta make sure that, you know, we're, we're checking this vehicle out every day. I know that where I work and my, and my brother knows the same thing. Uh, if, if you're running a vehicle or you're running a crane, you gotta fill out a maintenance sheet. A main, maintenance inspection sheet on it. And it, it's not a lot to ask, but I think that, you know, if some guy wants to do it, there's ways on getting some, uh, increases in pay to people and justifying it. You know, for the vehicles that we've seen, okay, there, there's ways to justify it. Thank you, Mr. President. Don Presvalinsky?
Okay, are there any other, uh, any other council comments on this ordinance? If none, it'll be held over to our October fifteenth council meeting. Ms. Nyelov, our next ordinance on second reading without objection by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salary for the mayor, and this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Yeah, this Councilman Dabney have anything he'd like to add at this time?
Yeah, just as, as I explained, uh, on first reading, this is setting the, the salary of the mayor at seventy-nine thousand four hundred nine dollars eighty-one cents or three thousand dollars fifty, uh, three thousand fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents bi-weekly. Um, and, uh, the general fund will be reimbursed six thousand dollars from the sanitary, uh, district operating fund, uh, to offset salary to the mayor. So actually coming out of the, the general fund, but the city will be paying the seventy-three, uh, thousand four oh nine and eighty-one cents.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any other further council comments? Any other council comments? Any other council comments? This ordinance will be held over for third reading in our October fifteenth meeting. Uh, next ordinance on second reading by title only without objection. Ms. Nyelov?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ord, ordinance setting the annual salary for the city clerk. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And does the author have anything he'd like to add?
Yep, just as, once again, as, as, uh, on first reading, uh, setting this city clerk's salary fifty-two thousand thirty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents or two thousand one dollars and fifty-one cents bi-weekly. Um, starting, you know, January first, two thousand twenty, general fund is reimbursed one thousand dollars from the sanitary district, uh, operating fund to offset salary of the city clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. So anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Uh, any council comments? Any council comments? Any council comments? Yes. Councilman Prince Valinsky?
Yeah, I just feel that, uh, I think that it should have been, and I don't make that look gesture, I think that, um, there was a way to find a one percent raise, um, uh, more money in, uh, I, I got a real tough time with even looking at some of these admin, administrators getting an increase. Okay, 'cause there, one or two percent is a lot more, you know? And, uh, I, I personally think that there, there's gotta be a way to find some money, you know? For, for the employees, these people do, especially, uh, in the clerk's office, do a lot of hard work and, and they're very, very, very efficient. And I think that, that one percent is almost like a slight, you know, sliding them. That's, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, any other council comments? Uh, any other council comments? If none, this ordinance, so this ordinance will be held over till our October fifteenth meeting. Uh, our next ordinance on second reading by title only, Ms. Nyelov for the fire department.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance establishing salaries for the fire department of the city of Michigan City for the calendar year two thousand twenty. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelov. Does the author have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Uh, just real quick with the, the fire department, uh, they had a one percent increase. Um, uh, I believe theirs was the, the me-too clause, just like the rest of the city, uh, with the one percent raise and so the, the, uh, fire department salaries were raised, um, by one percent as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. So anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council comments? Any council comments? Any council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be held over to our October fifteenth meeting. And Ms. Nyelov, our next ordinance on second reading by title only without objection, please?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance establishing salaries for Police Department of the City of Michigan City for the calendar year two thousand twenty. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And would the author have anything to offer at this time?
Yeah, real quick, yeah, the, the raises from the police department was two percent and this was due to, uh, labor negotiations a couple of years back that set the, the salary increase that would come in this year for two percent. That's the same as the, the fire department, those, that salary and the one percent, uh, raise, I'm going back to that, was also based off of labor negotiations and agreements, uh, with the city.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any further council comments? Councilman Stemley?
I'd just like to make a comment real quick. I know, um, when you do labor negotiations, um, when you do give the two percent raise, um, I, I'd like to see in the future too, the, we knew the two percent raise was coming, um, to possibly give the employ, the city employees, you know, the same amount as the fire employees. So, like you said, we knew two percent, it's up, it's not up, up to us to do the percentage raises, but I, I'd like to see the administration look into this a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hamilton?
I believe this, as far back as I can remember, when the employees only got a one percent pay raise. Normally it's two, so, or four. I don't think I've ever remember hearing one percent. So I think all the council were kind of caught off guard by that too, just as well as employees, so.
Any other council comments? Having none, this will be held over to our October fifteenth council meeting. And I believe we'll move over to our next ordinance on second reading by title only. Ms. Nyelov?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salaries for the common council members. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And does the author have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Yep, the, uh, common council will be paid an annual salary of fourteen thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and nine cents. Uh, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents bi-weekly, starting, uh, as of January first, two thousand twenty.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comments? Councilman Prince Valinsky?
Um, in all due respect to, uh, my fellow council members and, uh, employees of the city, I, in, uh, in good conscience, I cannot accept a pay raise. And I think that, uh, I would like to, and I think in all good conscience, as a signal of our frustration that we shouldn't accept it and that we, I would like to make a motion that, for the calendar year of two thousand twenty, that the salary be set at two thousand nineteen, uh, wage scale. That's a form of a motion.
There's a motion on the table. Yeah, that's being writing. Yeah, that's true.
Okay. I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Now, I would like to make another motion. I would like for unanimous consent to have amendments on third reading.
There's been a motion for unanimous consent on third reading for the city council not to take a salary increase for the year twenty twenty. Is there any objection to that? Okay, there's objection to that. So there will not be any re, or amendments on third reading pertaining to that ordinance.
Can I have a quick comment on, on the, this ordinance?
Sure.
The council?
Sure.
Salaries? Um, I work, uh, by day job over in East Chicago and I work with actual council members that work in East Chicago. And just to give a little comparison of the council member salaries, if I'm not mistaken, they're around forty-two thousand, and I'm not giving that as, don't quote me on that, but. A thousand, and I'm not giving that as, don't quote me on that, but I'm I'm almost certain it's in the forties. And we're making fourteen thousand, so just to get a perspective of how. You know, the the other council members are paid, so nobody's asking to be raised to forty grand. Um, but just wanted to make that point so you. Get a picture in your head of of what we're being paid versus, you know, one that I know of, um, in the northwest Indiana area.
And I'd like to make a comment on that. Uh, subject also is that for the past three years, I know I have voted down uh any pay raises. But for coming into a an election year where a new council. May be coming in because I I knew what the pay was when I got on the council, so I was satisfied with that. Uh, and according to Councilman Dabney, you can tell we're not, we're not getting rich making fourteen thousand dollars a year doing this job. And there's a lot that goes in to this job besides just showing up for council meetings and sitting here uh. For a couple hours going through ordinances, uh but my point is. For a new council coming in and new council members that. We should be able to have higher salaries and move on from there. You know, we're also trying to attract people to the position and granted, you're not gonna get rich. But you don't wanna do it at a pauper's rate either, so I I agree with or I disagree. With uh Councilman Prince Valinsky's uh. Thought process on that and uh, you know, I know in the one time we were also talking about because the county council. And a lot of people don't know this, but the county council, and same thing with the county commissioners. They have twelve meetings a year, the county council does, they have twelve, maybe eleven meetings, scheduled meetings a year. Uh, they make somewhere in the neighborhood at twenty-four thousand dollars a year. They get benefits and they get a pension. If they're on the county council for eight years, you get a state pension when you're done. So we have, we get none of that, and I don't expect to get it, but I just wanna bring that out there, so when we talk about a uh. Minimum four hundred dollar raise a year, which after you take taxes out of it, it'll wind up to be two hundred dollars. I don't have any problem taking that two hundred dollars. Okay, moving on. Councilman Dabney?
I mean, and any council member could elect not to take their own pay raise, so they they can do that as well.
Any other comments on this item? Councilman Hamilton?
You know, we've been, I've been up here seven years voting on our own pay and I kept saying the whole time, it's really not our pay that we're voting on. This council has fallen behind on pay ten, twelve years ago. And we we're never gonna catch up if we keep voting down even a one percent pay raise. The employees absolutely deserve more than one percent. The council should be in line with whatever the employees get. The council should get as all elected officials and everybody should be in line. Otherwise, one day you're gonna look and nobody's gonna wanna in office because it's too much work and not enough pay. Furthermore, what employee would ever turn down a pay raise? If you really think about it, when you when you go to a job, if your boss offers you a pay raise, you take it, so. This new council that's coming on needs to remember that. These seats are being held only for the next four years for you. After that, it might be somebody else.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Uh, this ordinance will be held over for third reading or October fifteenth meeting. And moving on to ordinance on third reading, Miss Nylep. Uh, by title only without objection, please.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation of the budget of the local option income tax Lloyd Fund. For the purchase of equipment, uniforms, attendance, and the police academy and other related expenses. At the hire of the new police officers for Michigan City Police Department. This is introduced by Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Don Prince Valinsky.
And exactly as the uh title explains. Is that we are decreasing the Lloyd Fund by sixty thousand and increasing the police clothing and safety equipment. For sixty thousand to send and to hire on new police officers. I think we're hiring on eight new officers, correct, Chief? Pardon? Okay, eight to ten, eight to ten new officers. That's all I have to say about it. I it's needed. We need to hire these officers. We need to get them in the training. They need the equipment. And uh we need to move on and fund this. Uh, with that being said, is there any public? Public comment on this ordinance? Any public comment on this ordinance? Any public comment on this ordinance? Having none, is there any council comment? Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Uh, motion to approve support.
Motion to approve by Councilman Fitzpatrick and seconded by Councilman Hamilton on the ordinance. Is there any other further discussion on this ordinance? Any other further discussion? Any further discussion? Miss Nylep on the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stemley? Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton? Mr. Don Prince Valinsky?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Prince Valinsky.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, Miss Nylep. And moving on from there, that's our last uh ordinance of the evening. Under unfinished business, nominations, the council, common council has one appointment. To the Veterans Commission due to the resignation of Ms. Natalie Stewart. Whose term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty. So if anyone knows of anyone, that might be a good uh appointment to that commission, tell them to apply in the clerk's office.
I got a uh quick question. Do they have to be a veteran? To serve on the Veterans Commission? But it may not be in the ordinance, I don't know.
I'll give you a copy of the ordinance.
Yeah, take a look at the ordinance. Okay, under new business, the council has approval of two change orders to the energy savings project. Ones at the senior center and ones at Patriot Park. And I know Mr. Todd Smith is here this evening, Anderson, Todd Anderson. Is here from uh E S G, and if you would, Todd, could you explain both of these little projects that have to be done?
Uh, certainly. Uh, so starting off with the uh Patriot Park location. Uh, we installed our solar system uh at a location um that. We had a fence in to uh secure that that's uh solar system. The uh this cut off access to a water valve which feeds that field. Um, our contract included uh putting a new gate along the. What would be the uh north side of the the solar array adjacent to uh the um. Concession stand there, so. For ease of access to that, um, the uh parks department requested that we. Uh, install a new gate to uh get access to the the watering valve there. And out at uh the senior center, um, after we had uh done our work. The electric resistance heaters uh were found to be. Uh, not working properly, did some investigation and there were several electric shorts. Uh, within those electric uh unit heaters, uh so they were coming on periodically. And and not being controlled by our our new system, so um. So electric shorts uh are gonna be fixed with those uh with that change.
Okay, on that Patriot Park uh gate replacement. At eight hundred dollars, is that an estimate that you guys have already or how did you come up with that?
Yeah, uh, we have a quotation from uh our solar installer, uh their fence subcontractor to do that work.
Okay, are you, you, you have to get three bids or do you just go out and get one bid?
Uh, we, we go, we went back to our solar installer who had a fencing contractor under their. Their work.
Oh, okay.
To provide us a quote to do that.
And then at the at the senior center, are those radiant heaters? Uh, where are they actually located? They located?
They're they're located uh at the um floor-to-ceiling window locations uh in that, in the senior center, so there are. I think five unit heaters uh uh around the building in different locations.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, uh, any other questions? Mr. Anderson, any other questions? Approve, all right, there's. Yeah, uh, Councilman Hamilton made a motion and Councilman Prince Valinsky uh seconded. All those in favor have signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. All right, change orders are approved. Uh, takes care of new business. Comments from the public? Comments from the public?
Yeah, for Kathy Stransky, two-two-three, spark grab. How about um, Mr. Prince Valinsky? Could you maybe read the requirements for somebody that wants to be on the Veterans uh Commission? Maybe they aren't aware that they could be on the Veterans Commission. I mean, there there's probably veterans that don't realize they could do that.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, uh, at the next council meeting, I will do that. Okay, read the ordinance. Good suggestion, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, public comment is uh closed at this time. Any comments from the council? And any council comments? Councilman Hamilton?
Motion adjourned.
Okay. Is there a second? Support. Seconded by Councilman Dabney. I do have, before we uh take the vote on that. I do wanna make a comment and getting back to the uh finance committee. And going through the uh the budget process. Right. Yeah, we still have council comments. You can make a motion anytime you want to and get a second, but you can still, you still gotta go through with the council comments.
The only time it's not is when a motion at table.
Okay, getting back to what I was saying is that, uh, I think the finance committee. Councilman Fitzpatrick, Councilman Dabney, uh, did a great job. Going through this process, and I know it was Councilman Fitzpatrick's first time. He went through it last year, didn't you, Councilman? Yeah, and it's always a uh eye-opening exercise and you and you learn a lot. So uh just wanna thank you gentlemen for the hard work and effort put into that. And to let the public know and also where we were, you know, we were looking for money to save. So possibly we could give employees raises and and what have you. And going by through our. Four-day process of averaging maybe three hours a night. We came up with cost savings of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, I don't know why some of that money can't be taken and given out for raises. I don't know. That's not my decision. I have my opinion on it, but. You know, why the administration maybe couldn't dig a little bit harder and find some wiggle room somewhere? To get the money. I know that they cut an additional one million dollars or maybe a little bit more from the riverboat than what was being spent. Last year, and I know that we don't wanna generally spend money from the riverboat. To give raises, cuz we don't know how long that riverboat will always be there. But still, it's an option to look at. So I just wanna thank you gentlemen for doing an outstanding job. And uh we saved the taxpayers of Michigan City four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And with that being said, there was a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, meeting's adjourned.